I would like to call to order the Maplewood City Council meeting for Tuesday, February 23rd. And first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty or justice in all. Thank you. And then roll call, please.
Councilmember Crossley?
Here.
Councilmember Fockingham?
Here.
Mayor Greenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Partey?
Yeah.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yeah.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Here.
Councilmember Wood?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor Quarm is present.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to invite our legal counsel to provide us with information regarding the teleconference.
Thank you, Mayor. I would request that the record reflect that pursuant to section 610.015 of the Missouri Sunshine Law, members of the city council who are not physically present in the council chambers can still participate and vote remotely on all matters when an emergency exists. And I would request that the minutes reflect that we are still under the COVID-19 pandemic emergency that has been declared in the United States, in the state of Missouri, and in St. Louis County. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We don't need to excuse any council persons. So item number five is the approval of the council agenda.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to second. Any suggested changes?
There was just one thing. I did see a typo. It's on item number 15, the address on Commonwealth is incorrect. So who's ever reading that? It's supposed to be 3723.
Thank you, 3723.
Commonwealth, yeah.
Okay. Oh, I see. Yeah. Okay. Any other changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. Item number six is a public hearing to hear citizens' comments on a request by James Hendricks to rezone 3723 Commonwealth Avenue from an SR single-family residential district to a PUD district, which is a planned unit development. Is there anyone that wanted to speak on this particular topic?
I'm showing Luke Havel. I'll bring Luke in. I'm sorry. Looks like I brought Amber in on accident. I know Luke dropped out.
I got him. Luke, are you there?
You got him? Okay, thanks, John.
I don't have anything to speak on this issue. I had another topic I wanted to bring up at the public forum.
Okay, we'll call on you at the public forum then. Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak with regards to this particular public hearing on the zoning issue?
I don't see any hands, Mayor Greenberg.
Okay. In that case, we'll move on to item number seven, which is the Metropolitan Sewer District Proposition Presentation. It looks like we have Sean Hadley.
John, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Marion G. is on here also. He's our finance director. If you guys can bring him in as well.
All right.
And then do you want to go to share screen or?
Who wants to share it?
I'll share it.
Hold on. All right. All right, you should, Sean, be able to share your screen.
I don't see the option to.
Hold on one sec.
All right. I just have mute. That's all I have.
I'm gonna make you panelist and then you'll be able to. Right?
Okay.
Yeah, you should be able to share now.
I'm sharing my screen with you guys. You have Marion on too?
I do.
Okay.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. I'm not sure if you can see me or not.
No, I just have Sean as a panelist to share.
Okay, that's fun. I can go through the presentation whenever you're ready. Please, go ahead. Okay. Thank you. And thank you for your time this evening. I will be brief, but we'll take as long as we need to to answer any questions that you may have. So the reason we're here this evening is to talk to you about primarily MSD Proposition Y. So on April the 6th of 2021, MSD will have a proposition on the ballot throughout St. Louis City and about 90% of the county. So I'll first talk about Proposition Y, which deals with our wastewater rates. The rest of the ballot issues will relate to potential changes to our charter. So I'll just briefly go through those. Our public affairs group led by Sean will send you some additional information regarding those charter changes. But I want to spend the bulk of the time talking about Proposition Y. So Sean, if you could go to slide two, please. So the work that's being mandated that we have to do is about $1.6 billion worth of capital work over the next three years. And that's approximately 300 capital improvement projects that will undertake to meet regulatory and system improvement needs. The work is mandated through an agreement between MSD, the EPA, the Missouri Coalition for the Environment, and the Department of Justice. This agreement was entered into in 2012. What Proposition Y is requesting voters to consider is how do we pay for that work? We can either cash fund it, or if the voters approve Prop Y, that would give us authorization to issue approximately $500 million in bonds. Here on the slide, it kind of gives you an ideal as to the type of work that we'll be doing. Most of it is construction of new wastewater sewers. We also have to eliminate 50 sewer overflows, which are is part of our agreement with EPA. Those overflows are not allowed. We will be doing some work at our BISL and our Lee May Treatment Plants on the incinerators. And then finally, we have a pretty large project that involves building a tunnel from our Fenton plant to our Lower Merrimack Plant, and that will allow us to take that Fenton plant offline. Okay, so this next chart gives you a comparison of the rates if voters were to approve us having the authority to issue those $500 million worth of bonds that I talked about compared to what the rates would be if voters did not approve that bonding authorization. And again, what we're asking voters to approve is not the rate adjustment itself. We've already had a process in which the rates have been determined through our rate commission process. But again, this gives us some flexibility in terms of how we can fund the program itself. So in the first section of the graph there, you'll see our current rates right now for a typical residential customer using about 4,500 gallons of water is about $56.40 per month. If voters give us bonding authority, you see the rates there for FY '22, '23, and '24. So in '24, our rates will be approximately $62.60. Whereas if voters do not approve Proposition Y, which means we have to cash fund that entire $1.6 billion worth of capital work, you'll see that our rates in FY '24 will increase from about $56.40 now for a typical customer to over $86 per month. So Sean, if you could go to the next slide, please. Okay, we're often asked as to when is it more expensive to do bonding as compared to cash funding our capital program? And as you would imagine, in the long term, it's expensive, more expensive to do bonding, to issue bonds, because you have to pay interest on that money. So around 2035, you'll see that kind of orange colored graph there that represents the cost of bonding. And the no bond is the darker color line that you'll see. In 2035, it becomes less expensive for us to not issue bonds, to cash fund that program. And that's primarily because our debt service on the bonds that we've issued, we typically issue 30-year bonds that that service and those bonds will be kind of paid off. So really, what we're doing is we're paying a small amount for a few bond issues that extend past 2035. But the point is, is that at some point in time, which is 2035, we are projecting right now that it will be cheaper for us at that time to not issue bonds. But we're good ways off from that. Sean, if you could go to the next graph, please. So before I talk to you about our charter change amendments, I want to make sure, I know I kind of went through that quickly, but are there any questions regarding Proposition Y that I can answer? Okay, hearing none. I'm just going to take a few moments to talk to you about some other items that are on the ballot that involves some changes to our charter. Okay, so Proposition 1 really just updates some old language that's in our charter, and it updates a couple of provisions and some references that are outdated. Proposition 2 involves it involves how our ordinances are passed by the board. As many of you are aware, we have three members of the board that are appointed by the mayor of the city of St. Louis. The other three are appointed by the county executive of St. Louis County. And right now, we have to have two yes votes from the city appointee and two yes votes from the county appointee in order for an ordinance to be approved. That is sometimes problematic when we have four members of the board that are present and there are three county and one city. We sometimes aren't able to get ordinances approved. That doesn't happen that often. Typically, what occurs is we'll have five members present, and you have two members, let's say, from the city, and one may have a conflict, which they are not comfortable voting on a piece of legislation. And in that particular case, we will either have to wait or modify the legislation. But what this particular proposition will allow us to do is if there are five members present, and with unanimous consent, four yes votes will allow us to pass an ordinance. And the ordinance would take effect immediately. Right now, we have to wait for 15 days before our ordinances go into effect. So Sean, if you could move to the next slide. Proposition 3 deals with our rate commission that I referenced a moment ago. It just clarifies the participation of the commission members, the length of the proceedings, and also the methodology that's used to review our proposed rate adjustments. Proposition 4 changes the compensation for the trustees from $300 a year to $600 a year. Right now, our trustees have paid $25 for each board meeting that they attend. They are not compensated for committee meetings. And so all this proposition will do is to allow them to be compensated for our committee meetings, which typically last longer than our board meetings do. And then finally, Proposition Y, it permits the district to engage the same audit firm for more than five years. Right now, we're limited. We have to change our audit firm every five years. This proposition will allow us to maintain the same audit firm, but the audit partner and the audit manager would have to be switched out. It's becoming a little bit difficult for us to get the number of bids that we hope to receive on our audits. So we are asking voters to approve this proposition so that make that auditing process a little easier for us. So that basically is a summation of what Proposition the propositions related to the charter change would do. If there are any questions that you may have, you have some information there. You have Sean Hadley's contact information, his email address, and his phone number. So if there are any additional questions that you have regarding Proposition Y or charter change proposals, please feel free to reach out to Sean. Can you briefly summarize the projects that are going to take place in Maplewood? I don't have that information with me, but I think, Sean, I thought we provided a packet.
Yeah, we did provide a packet to the public works director. If you don't have it, let me know, and I can make sure Bob's on the call too. We can make sure we get it to you.
There's a bunch of blue dots that show up approximately where Maplewood is, and I'm not sure what the nature of those projects are.
Yeah, we can get you the details. If you don't have them, I can make them a treat. We can get them over to you.
They have what you provided me.
Okay, so what I'll do is we'll go back and look and see. I can get you the actual project, detailed project list, and I'll forward that over to you, and you guys can take a look at what's in the area.
Are you attempting in any way to separate stormwater from wastewater in the Maplewood area since we have combined sewers?
So there's still other project clear. There's been an initiative where we're disconnecting the downspout. We're still continuing that work in there as well. Some of the project outline might have, but I don't have an informative body to have details on exactly what that type of work is. But yes, in the combined sewer system, we are working on separating out the stormwater from the wastewater. But Prop Y is strictly just wastewater funding. It has nothing to do with stormwater side.
You've already implemented the increase in rates based on aerial photography and impervious surface, right? We have not. We actually took a proposal to, we put it on the ballot two years ago, that would allow us to fund our stormwater capital program. That was voted down by the voters, so we do not have an impervious-based fee in place. Okay. I wasn't sure. Do other people have questions for MSD? If not, if we do have questions, run those through the city manager, and we can get answers to those. And thank you for providing us with your presentation. Thank you for giving us the opportunity. Okay.
Thank you.
In this case, we will then move on to item number eight, which is the first of two public forums. And I know that Mr. Havel had his hand up, so go ahead. I can barely hear you.
Okay, sorry. Let me see if I can.
That's getting better.
Close to there. So thank you all for your time and your service to our city. What I'd like to ask of the council tonight is to consider updating a couple of ordinances that specifically are the reason I've been told that I would not be permitted to have a bathroom in a space above a garage. So the ordinances that I'm referring to are 56-32, number of structures, and 56-560 specifically prohibited accessory uses. So in my case, I'm talking about the garage, which would be an accessory building. And 56-560 states that it shall be unlawful for any person, firm, or corporation to occupy an accessory building for purposes of residency or any other use in systematic human occupancy. So what my project specifically I was hoping to do would be add a space above my garage for a home office and fitness space. And as I'm sure all of you are aware, and as we can tell from this council meeting alone, the world has changed quite a bit. And you know, we very likely could see a lot of businesses not return to offices. So the home office is going to become a really critical thing probably for a lot of folks. I know my family, where my wife and I both are currently working from home. So you know, with considerations like that and the change in, you know, Maplewood and its real estate, where, you know, homes in my neighborhood, which is in Ward 3, have listed for, you know, $400,000 and probably sold pretty close to that if they didn't. You know, I think permitting something like that would be an amenity that, you know, prospective Maplewood residents would desire. And, you know, the type of folks we have purchasing homes in Maplewood now are not going to be those who are likely to try and rent out a room above a garage. You know, they're trying to increase their quality of life and their ability to, you know, work within the space of the housing stock that Maplewood has, which is, you know, turn of the 20th century. So.
Luke, I apologize. I should have mentioned that we're trying to limit comments to three minutes, but the work session that we had tonight, we're going to be revisiting several chapters, at least 10 chapters of the Code of Ordnances in a systematic manner. And we're going to be looking at issues like this. And so right now, we're not going to be dealing with those individually, but we'll be dealing with them in the context of the chapter that they reside in. And so, and at that point, you'll have an opportunity to provide. You know, I understand the argument with regard to accessory dwelling units, and we need to address that. So unless you have anything else, you know, right now, in the interest of time, I'd like to move on if that's okay with you.
Yep, that's fine. That's really all I had. And like I said, I'd like for the council to consider that and at a minimum, make it more clear so that folks that are trying to read the ordinances can understand clearly what is and isn't permitted, because it seems very gray to me. So that's all. I appreciate the time again.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I'm looking at our list. I don't see anyone else with their hand raised. Keep in mind that we will have a second public forum later at the end of the meeting. And so unless anyone else wants to speak now, I'm going to move on to item number nine, which are announcements.
I just have, I do have one quick one, just an update about the Coffee Crawl, which is March 20th. The tickets just went on sale today. So you just need to go to the city website for the link, and that's how you can register for that.
Okay.
And that's all I had.
I also have an announcement. Yesterday, the Crow's Nest opened for carryout, and I would encourage all of you to take advantage of it. I did it this evening, and it was great.
Thank you. They have good food. Thanks for sharing.
I got the carryout last night, and it was awesome.
Any other announcements? Okay, I'm gonna move on to item number 10, which is the approval of the February 9th, 2021 city council meeting minutes.
Motion to approve?
Okay.
We have a motion to second. Are there any modifications?
I just actually wanted to modify it to reflect that the statements I made were made that are reflected in there. But I did also ask a question a couple of times, which was I asked Chief Cruz whether any additional actions were going to be taken by the police department to like training or other things to prevent sort of the type of behavior that occurred by at least one or more officers in that association page. So like that type of behavior didn't cross over into the employment setting. So I just wanted the record to reflect that I asked that question as well.
Okay. And if, are there any other modifications, changes that? Okay, then we have a motion to second. And will, in terms of approving this as amended, Jackie, do we need to do anything?
No, just state that it was amended and then ask for approval of the minutes as amended.
Okay, so we have a motion to second to approve the minutes as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes have been approved. Item number 11 is the Special Business District Tax Advisory Commission Report. Who will be providing that? I see Sheila is now online here. Can you hear Sheila?
Yes.
Okay. You're representing the SPD tonight?
Yes, I am. Special Business District Commission.
Please report on you guys' activities.
Well, just like everyone else in our community, we have dealt with a number of challenges with COVID-19. A lot of work and thought and effort went into moving forward remotely and safely during these times. In the beginning, our first event to be canceled was the Coffee Crawl. And then very shortly after that, a number of businesses had to close. At that time, we increased our communication with businesses specifically to navigate the health department mandates, the disaster loans, and the County Cares Act funding. As restrictions began to lift and some businesses were able to reopen, we partnered with the Mid-County Chamber of Commerce and launched the "We Are Open" campaign. This included window signs and banners. Moving further ahead, knowing that several of our eating establishments had limited, and in some cases, no outdoor dining, the Special Business District Commission installed three dining tents outside to encourage people to pick up their orders and dine outside. Some other businesses took advantage of those tents using or reserving it for outdoor events. Had to cancel some more events as the year went on, including String Fest and Let Them Eat Art to encourage, again, some business, some street flow. We started wandering Wednesdays and outside events in July and August to, just with a simple concept, to encourage foot traffic in the business district. And that seemed to go fairly well. Later in the year, the commission purchased barricades, which were used to create a parklet, an extension of the sidewalk for businesses to use to, again, increase outdoor dining space. Of course, a lot of our businesses on Manchester specifically don't have that sidewalk capacity. So that's what those barriers did. And it also served as a test, if you will, about feasibility of doing a parklet again in the future. Again, to encourage foot traffic, we partnered with Maplewood Library and did a collaboration called Tales from Maplewood, more family-oriented, encouraging foot and uh did a collaboration called Tales From Maplewood, more family oriented, encouraging foot traffic. This is something we intend to do quarterly. It was very well received. And of course, we um did our Small Business Saturday in November. Uh, we also started a program, the Food Ambassador Program, which encouraged uh neighborhoods in Maplewood, specific blocks, to order takeout from the same restaurant on a particular night and then arrange with that restaurant um for deliveries. So since all the deliveries were on one block, it really increased um people's interest in that. And then a few other pro- projects that we've worked on in this last year. Again, keeping the pandemic in mind, um, we did update our exterior renovations grants to businesses. And the change we made in that was to um include rear entrances. So as a council member Crossley just said, uh, Crowsnest just opened. Their main point of entry is a rear entry. Um, so we decided that we would include that language in there. So certain businesses like Crowsnest wouldn't be unfairly penalized. We did make about four thousand five hundred in grants, and we are anticipating another seven thousand before the end of our fiscal year. Also, very exciting, uh, we finally moved forward on our marketing campaign. Makers and creative community of Maplewood. After an RFP was sent out, we engaged with Creative Entourage. They are a marketing firm uh in Saint Louis. Prim- primarily women-owned marketing firm, and they are developing a campaign to highlight all our creatives and makers in the Maplewood community. The campaign will kick off in March. The intent of the campaign is it needed to be updated, and we another avenue to draw customers and new businesses to Maplewood. And then over the next few months, we will be for uh focusing on this marketing campaign. Looking at executing events in very safe and responsible ways. Developing a new brochure and map for the Special Business District, installing new kiosks, repairing or repainting the electrical boxes, and starting a new event called uh Restaurant Week, where we highlight our Maplewood eateries. All things considered, we've uh been very busy. And uh overall, uh, ten new businesses opened during this time and three closed. There was also during this COVID nineteen period, a reopening and um three expansions of of our local businesses. Again, keeping the pandemic in mind, uh, with the city's help and approval, and we are grateful for that. We extended the renewal date for business licenses and restricted uh and relaxed some of the restrictions on outdoor dining to help our our businesses. And moving forward, we're we're uh we're still in challenging times, and we cannot stress or emphasize enough the continuous need to provide support for all our entities in the Small Business District. And that is our report. Thank you.
Sheila, uh, uh, news came out yesterday, uh, and I sent information to both Laura and Janine. But it said, uh, small businesses with fewer than twenty employees have will have a two-week exclusive window to apply for paycheck protection program funds. The Biden administration announced Monday, the application period, which begins Wednesday, and other eligibility changes are meant to help the smallest businesses and minority uh owned firms gain access to the forgivable loan program. I don't know much about the logistics of how to apply and everything like that, but uh there's a two-week window, and hopefully uh you'll be able to, yep, uh, we'll we'll be able to provide business uh information for our small businesses to hopefully uh obtain some of that money that's available.
Absolutely. We will post that on our uh Facebook page and probably also send out an email.
And if I can get more information on exactly how to make that happen, I will. But as you know, it's been difficult for uh, you know, the first two rounds that we went through, uh, trying to get money from the federal government to small businesses. I think this administration is more uh conducive to going directly to uh to small businesses than trickling down from larger businesses. So hopefully that'll help us out also.
Yes.
But uh, thank you for your for your report. Uh, it's the first of uh many uh reports that we're going to be receiving from boards and commissions uh on their activities, their issues and their needs. So uh, thanks for being the first one.
Thank you.
And now we have actually the second one, which is the uh item number twelve, the Sustainability Commission uh report. And who do we have uh lined up to uh provide us with that information? Jonathan, welcome.
Hey there.
So what have you guys been doing?
Hey, well, so council members, mayor, staff, thank you for inviting me to speak this evening. I'm Jonathan Spencer, and I've had the honor of serving as the chair of the Sustainability Commission for the past year. I'd like to start by acknowledging that we here reside in and govern land that was formerly inhabited by the Osage, Kickapoo, Miami, Great Sioux Nation, and untold other indigenous peoples. We should take steps to educate ourselves and our community about these great cultures and keep them in mind as we go about our activities here. Here are some of the major issues that we discussed in two thousand twenty. Solar panels for the library roof. So we were alerted that the library roof needed repair and assessed whether solar panels or hookups should be added at this time. We discovered that there was not a funding mechanism in place for adding solar panels, and so recommended that the city make it a priority to establish such a mechanism. We would like to see an electric vehicle charging station, preferably with a solar canopy added in the Marietta parking lot. We believe this would attract visitors to the Special Business District and help us in our goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions. We talked about garage forward design, which we believe has a negative impact on building community relationships in the neighborhood. And we'd like to see the city take steps to discourage such design. Uh, rainscaping and native plants have been very popular topics. The Deer Creek Watershed Alliance provides a cost-sharing program for Maplewood residents to use rainscaping and native plants to mitigate their stormwater runoff. MSD Project Clear also provides a grant for the same purpose. Uh, we're interested in how the city can help cultivate our local biodiversity and restore our impaired ecosystems. Mosquito spraying by the county is concerning for residents, especially those who raise bees, chickens, or children. Some of our members have been working with local nonprofits to identify alternative, more effective methods, such as mosquito dunks. Also of concern is that calling the county to opt out of spraying does not appear to work all of the time. A major issue we've been considering, and I know you have as well, is diversity. We recommended that the city recognize the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day, a day to learn about the cultures of those whose land we now occupy and identify ways to approach just resolutions. We're also interested in increasing diversity on our boards and commissions and appreciate your help to that end. In the year ahead, we hope to institute an environmentally preferable purchasing policy. We have a draft version that I believe the department heads are reviewing now. Once a new city manager is installed, we hope that they'll put in put it into practice as soon as possible. We'd also like to see the city adopt a climate action plan like the city of Saint Louis has done. And we hope to explore other opportunities to share resources with Saint Louis and the surrounding community as well. We're happy to hear that Maplewood intends to adopt the two thousand twenty-one International Energy Conservation Code when it becomes available as greenhouse gas emission reduction is one of our top priorities. And finally, we'll be working with the Maplewood Library to launch a series of sustain- sustainability programs and events on topics like uh local endangered species, household efficiency, urban biodiversity, composting, and and more. Uh, so thank you for your time. Please stay safe, and I'm happy to take questions or pass your messages on to the commission.
Mayor, I I do have a question. Um, Jonathan, would you mind educating me on what garage forward design exactly means? And and what are some of the cons related to that?
We don't see it here a lot, especially in um the traditional architecture uh throughout the neighborhood. Many of our houses were were built before automobiles were prevalent, so garages tend to be tucked in the back uh when they are present at all. Garage forward design is where the garage faces the street and is level with, if not proud of, the uh front door of the house. Um, and if you think of like a neighborhood where neighbors are out on their front porches speaking to each other as uh we're walking our dogs and such. The idea of pulling your car directly into a garage and shutting your door and walking in your house, and then you're there and encapsulated and and divorced from your community is is what we mean by garage forward design. It's popular in um newer um suburban development. Not so much here, but uh we do see it from time to time.
Yeah, yeah, I I think we would like to encourage the house porch-street relationship that we have now. Uh, and you know, you're absolutely correct. There's a lot of uh houses that look like it's, well, it's a garage with a house attached to it. It's not a uh a house with a garage attached to it, and that's a problem. And uh, you know, that needs to be addressed by Design Review Board. Uh, yeah, it's not a uh a code issue. Uh, and so as you probably heard, Jonathan, you know, we're going to be soliciting input from, you know, boards and commissions.
That's great.
Specifically with regards to, you know, the chapters, and it sounds like uh uh that, you know, uh sustainability would like to be involved in uh both uh the Design Review Board and Historic Preservation Commission.
Definitely. When Luke spoke, it reminded me that um, I think, working from home, cultivating that practice is a huge opportunity from from Maplewood in terms of sustainability. Reducing greenhouse gas emissions from single-car, single-occupancy car commutes to downtown and other uh commercial areas uh where probably most of our residents work. And it's also an uh opportunity for an economic boon for our restaurants here as uh citizens remain in the community during the workday. So yes, we definitely love to be a part of that review.
Yeah, and certainly, uh, I agree with that. You know, what you're looking at is my home office that I just completed. And so uh I'm very much looking forward of working out the house, and I do have an ADA compliant bathroom, but it's not above a garage.
Progress on Facebook.
And so uh uh as far as uh, you know, if you would like to introduce a a resolution for Indigenous Peoples' Day, I think that there's everyone on the council, I'm, well, I won't speak for everyone, but I I think that we would be receptive to uh to passing a resolution of that manner.
Sure. Should I do that now or wait till the public forum?
Uh, you you have a specific language for a a resolution?
I do. It'll probably take me a few minutes to dig it up, so I can wait for the public forum.
I I think if if you forward it to uh to myself, I'll make sure that the council gets it if we have any issues, which I, you know, we'll we'll get back to you, but otherwise uh, we'll, you know.
Great. I appreciate that.
Consider that.
Will do.
And uh as far as, you know, I'm looking at, you know, diversity on on the boards and commissions. Uh, we went through the uh through the process of uh soliciting and and finding members for boards and commissions. So unfortunately, we didn't uh, we weren't able to uh locate a whole lot of candidates uh that met their criteria, but I would, you know, I'd like to take the opportunity to encourage, if you know of anyone that uh that might be able to contribute to a board or commission and is is uh represents a minority, uh, please let them know that we would very much like to uh.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Um, one of the things that white dominant institutions can do to um increase diversity and inclusion is to um make their institutions more um anti-racist and more welcoming and less hostile places, and we have engaged in some beginning level of training in that respect, but also have put out or are working on or put out the RFP, I'm not sure where it is, to engage in a a long um to hire a consultant to work with the city on um a process of building capacity around equity and anti-racism. And so I think that's one important step to just acknowledge that we're um, we're doing that um to make it a more inviting place that that people want to join and stay.
Thank you.
And uh, are there any other questions for Mr. Spencer?
I have a question related to the presentation, but my question is actually to um Anthony. Um, I thought we had already started down the process of getting the uh charging station somewhere along in the business district. Um, where where are we along in that process?
It's budgeted. It's just a matter of where. We don't have a specific place. Um, the Marietta parking lot has um. It's basically ready to be. Um, we ended up putting conduit throughout the Marietta parking lot, so we could always put it there. If need be, there was discussion, would it make more sense on Manchester? And then finding a place on Manchester where someone would be willing to give up the spot. We don't have a spot picked out yet, but it is in the budget. If somebody has a spot they want to propose, we could have put one in.
That's great news.
Is that something that you need um something from council to move forward on, or um is it, would you just?
I'd probably rather speak to the, honestly, I think it'd be talk to the business community and see what they would say, possibly Special Business District, and just hear their thoughts on where it can go. They would probably know best where it would be utilized. I mean, the Marietta parking lot would get the most potential people using it. Um, and like I said, we ended up putting in the conduit many years ago when we constructed it. So I can talk to Laura Miller, and we can find out, maybe have her talk to the SPD at their next meeting, see if they're, that's where they would like to see it or some other place.
Right, thank you.
Hey, I just had a question. Um, I recently had a constituent ask about um or state that they would love to see more like native plantings around Maplewood and in our parks, and I don't. Maybe that's a perks issue or a combination, but um and I'm not going to lie, I don't have a green thumb, so I wouldn't know if it's a native plant or not. So I didn't know if you guys like had already talked about a plan for increasing that, and I'm just, you know, I don't know, or if that's something you're considering. Um.
So I'm sure uh Public Works can speak to that a bit. I know I'm I'm pretty sure that on the Sutton Loop Park, uh, many of those plants are native. But what I would like to bring up a great resource that Maplewood has. We partnered with the uh Saint Louis Audubon Society and um can get a reduced rate for any Maplewood uh community member who wants to go through their Brain Conservation Home Program. Uh, and what that program consists of is a volunteer from the Audubon Society coming and doing a very thorough assessment of your yard and um suggesting which native plants would work best and which uh spots in your yard. Uh, for me, they wrote up a very thorough seven-page document that I still refer to. It it was the best uh twenty-five dollars I have spent on my yard by far. So I highly recommend that service.
That's great.
These plans, I I am I'm not sure on that.
Councilmember Schmidt, just to add to that, we do have a native planting display in Deer Creek Park. Uh, we actually put in a rain gardener as well along the pedestrian trail, the GRG Trail. We have some limited, but we do have some in Sutton Loop Park, as Mr. Spencer indicated. But we also have a large-scale project that's going to be going to be put in at the Maplewood Municipal Pool Complex. That was approved as part of the splash pad. We got a grant to do so, and that'll either be going in sometime this spring or for sure this fall.
And that's good. I let the constituent know that. I just, I wasn't aware of the others, so that's good to know. Thank you.
I think we also use, um, do we get our trees? I think we also use um, do we get our trees from um Missouri relief for the um tree lawn program or from the Department of Conservation perhaps?
Yes, that's correct.
Right, so those are native trees uh that we install on the tree lawn, so that's another.
We've been using those. I I can tell you at least fourteen years.
And one last item. Uh you mentioned that on the mosquito spraying that the uh that the opt-out option uh wasn't necessarily being adhered to by the county. Is that correct?
That's what we think. Um I I have heard that the truck will still make noise when it drives by your house, whether it's actively fogging or not. But from anecdotal observation, it seemed as though they were still spraying when they drove by.
Okay, yeah, and I've talked with vector control on many occasions and uh so I uh I I'll check back with them uh when I get an opportunity to see. Yeah, they do have a uh uh a larva side program, as you mentioned, uh because we all know adulticides have uh way too many uh negative effects on the environment. Uh so um you know, engaging with with county vector control uh would probably be a good idea to pick that up again before mosquito season comes back.
Definitely.
I'm not sure a lot of people are aware, but as part of our vector control contract, they'll also come out to your yard upon request, and they will not only investigate your yard, they'll investigate neighbor properties. And I can't tell you how many times I've had someone call me back surprised at how thorough they were, as well as oftentimes finding out maybe it's their gutters that are causing some problems.
Sure.
Or maybe a lot of times it is a neighbor, but that's another um option. And then that they can also, a lot of times just by turning over children's toys or fixing stagnant gutters, they can uh dramatically cut down on mosquitoes and they they I'm glad you mentioned the uh the dunks and the larva side program. They also do that as well. It's not simply uh adult larva side spray. We have we have all those um factors in with our vector control contract.
Hardware in the special business district also provides mosquito docks.
And uh I was surprised and pleased that St. Louis County bases their their spraying schedule on uh mosquito traps. They trap mosquitoes, so they they determine what kind of mosquitoes and how many they are. So it's just not our they're not arbitrarily just going through and and spraying on a regular basis like they did when we were kids. Or some of us were kids. Uh and so uh, you know, they they've been very responsive when I've talked with them and uh you know, uh the the type of uh adult aside that they use is another question that we can, you know, talk with them about. So uh are there any other questions for Mr. Spencer before we conclude the uh Sustainability Commission report? Thank you very much for your service and uh for the the work that you've done and uh look forward to working with you guys on making Maplewood a more sustainable community.
Great. Thank you all.
Thanks.
Item number thirteen is a resolution of the City Council, the City of Maplewood authorizing the city manager to accept the bid from all-inclusive res- recreation in the amount of sixty-four thousand ninety-four dollars for for pour-in-place uh surfacing for the playground at Ryan Hummer.
Motion to approve.
We have a uh motion. Second, please.
Okay.
Uh we have a motion. A second. Uh I have one question. I I understand that the the last installation lasted ten years. What is the what would be the warranty on this particular uh in type of installation?
This warranty is gonna be, I my understanding is it's seven years. The other one, it lasted ten years, but we had to do a lot of work on it. The installation was poor from the start. I it lasted ten years, but it was never done properly. Tiles were the rage about ten ten years ago. At the same time, when I say this, our Deer Creek tiles, we haven't had many problems with. But we talked to several different parks departments and people seem to be going back to the pour-in-place because the idea is um the useful life is very similar with the two, and there's a lot fewer problems pour-in-place. And it's also, it's not much cheaper, but it's also a little cheaper as well. About fifteen percent here uh uh cheaper.
Is it still that sort of like squishy soft thing? It's just poured all in one? You just?
Yes.
Right on. Okay.
Yes. They've come up with better methods to patch two if there's a problem, where in the past it was, once you kind of, once it was worn out, like particularly like say a spot under the slide where all the kids land frequently or near a ladder, they've come up with better methods of 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 minor repairs if there's issues as well since, and that's also kind of um people also kind of shied away from the tiles for those reasons.
Any other questions uh with regards to the uh uh pour-in-place surfacing? Uh roll call, please.
Councilmember Crossley?
Yes.
Councilmember Buckingham?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pardini?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one dash seven is approved.
Thank you. Item number fourteen is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to execute a lease with Sumner One for two Canon DXC five-seven-six-zero uh one for the police department, one for the city hall, and two Kia Sierra Echo System M three-six-five-five IDN desktop printers slash copiers for the city hall front office and prosecuting clerk's office. So.
Sorry.
Thank you. We have a motion.
Second.
A motion. Second, uh are these replacing uh obsolete models?
Correct. And we've had excellent results with the the same. We're going with the exact same model. We had in seven years, we had no complaints. And this uh Marty Corporate's memo mentions these. One thing that's nice about these is the the level of security is much better with these machines, and there's also, they're faster, they're they're definitely better quality, but um the other machines are seven years old, basically just outlive their useful life.
Okay.
It just looks like the cost per copy went down too, which is nice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Marty, do you have any other thing, anything else to add?
No, Jenny got it. The cost of copies went down.
Okay. If there aren't any other questions, I'll entertain a roll call vote.
Councilmember Buckingham?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pardini?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one dash eight is approved.
Thank you. Item number fifteen is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing a planned unit development district and approving a preliminary uh development plan for approximately sixteen thousand two hundred square feet of land at thirty-seven twenty-three Commonwealth Avenue.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion. A second. And uh just to clarify, uh what what is the minimum requirement in terms of area for a planned unit development, Anthony?
Residential is fifteen thousand square feet, commercial is one acre.
Okay. So uh.
It was about sixteen and some change. This is this meets that requirement.
Okay. Are there other questions?
Yeah, I have a quick one just on process. So Anthony, uh did this item come before the planning commission?
It did. They unanimously recommended it.
All right, great. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Um I have a quick question, just uh for clarification. The um documentation states that there were to be four two-bedroom units and only one three-bedroom unit. But um one of the units appears to be actually an additional three-bedroom because there's an office that's indicated. So just for clarification purposes, I don't know how that why that's considered an office rather than a bedroom and if that impacts the um overall parking requirements.
A three-bedroom would add one space, but they still have surplus of parking. I want to have uh Mr. Hendricks in if we'd like to bring him in. Um he's the uh developer. Would you like to hear from Mr. Hendricks?
Um, sure, yeah.
Does anyone have any concerns about that? Mr. Hendricks, can you hear us?
Yeah, I'm here.
Can you answer that question about the office versus the bedroom?
Yeah, I think it was just we didn't have enough space to put a closet in and a full window, so it was really just closing off that space so it would be more functional for the residents because without a full window and closet, I don't think it's considered a legal bedroom. And so it was really just designed to be a useful, a you a more useful space. It was closed off from the living room and living space.
Okay, the the I'm sorry, I apologize. The plan, it looks like from what I can see, it's a little faded here. It does look like it has a closet. Um so I'm looking at unit number six on the plans.
Yeah, let me look up.
And I assume that large opening is a window because the others.
Yeah, let me pull up the floor plans. Hold on.
Anthony, correct me if I'm wrong, but doesn't it have to be so so many square feet too as well?
Correct. It's square footage. It's also closet. The closet has to be so large as well.
Are you talking about unit number four? Is that right?
Um, the plan that I'm looking at says not unit number six. It says two-bedroom, two-bath, but it actually bedroom one, and then it says bedroom three, and then the one in the corner says office.
Oh, yeah, I think it's because the square footage is too small.
Okay.
On that one. And we'll probably, I mean, it's still, those are preliminary floor plans. I think I'm just gonna change that to two-bed, two-bath and just eliminate the office and make the space bigger for those two-bed, two-bath.
Okay.
Uh for that reason.
Okay, yeah, cuz I was I I was just concerned about the how the parking was gonna be impacted by your overall plans and and hoping that that didn't throw a wrench into things.
One more, if you went, if you added a three-bedroom, you would need one more parking space. They they would still have adequate parking cuz there's a surplus of one. Yeah, Mr. Hendricks, if they need to in the future, bring it back and amend it. They also own the small triangular-shaped parcel to the south. Uh they could put three parking spaces there. They would have to amend the PUD to essentially include this. And that's another option as he gets into it. It's a complete build-out, so um as long as I, we did discuss, as long as the actual number of rooms and and how many bedrooms or number of units stays the same, he has flexibility within these floor plans as long as he meets those ordinance requirements because this is gonna be a complete gut rehab.
Yeah, correct.
Go ahead.
And that and that second floor, six and seven, you can almost we're gonna put an internal stairwell, so we're actually flip-flopping them, so the living rooms are gonna be in the center. And the bedrooms are just literally the same floor plan, but I know that we're gonna make the unit six two-bed, two-bath, and we're not gonna, we're gonna eliminate the office just cuz it worked out better. Cuz initially we would, with this layout, we'd have to put all external stairwells. And we decided to do one internal stairwell from the parking lot, and that makes it more convenient and safer for residents. And then uh it's not really noted, but on unit number seven, I'm actually designing that to live there, so that'll be my home. And then the I will be the landlord on pro uh property.
Cool. I'm excited about the development.
Since it's a PUD, uh uh what are we basing the uh parking requirements on?
We're still using the the current code requirements for parking.
For multi-family?
Correct.
Okay.
It's one and a half per up two-bedroom and three. If you have three bedrooms or more, it's two per unit.
Are there other questions for Mr. Hendricks?
No, I have one for Anthony though.
Thanks for answering that, Jimmy. It's good. Good talking to you. I'll see you later. Yes, Sean.
Uh, couple things. One, um I must have passed by it. Since this is just the preliminary approval of a PUD, how long does uh Mr. Hendricks have to get us the final? I could, I didn't see it here, so.
It's in the uh PUD ordinance. It's a it's under section five, timing. Final development plan must be submitted within eighteen months of passage of this ordinance.
Okay, and um.
We've had some that were a year, but considering it's a gut rehab, Councilmember Buckingham, we threw an extra six months because I don't know how long this is gonna take.
Okay, no, that no, that's fine. And um of course, uh all of these plans that we have here are subject to change floor plans as long as he stays uh within the what he has stated as one three-bedroom, two two-bedrooms and whatever the case is, correct?
Yes.
So he's just totally preliminary.
Absolutely.
And uh you also have the authority, or the City of Maplewood has a zoning administrator, has the authority about the landscaping and lighting?
Correct. I put a requirement in there that they need to submit a separate plan for that um which we'll we'll probably just send off to our landscape architect. It's Land Design Services. They they review that for us at the and the petitioner pays the cost of that review fee.
That's right. So what who do you send off the lighting uh plan to? Or do you?
Usually I give that the front neck and let them look it over.
Okay.
I'm not sure who they use, but I send that off to our engineering consultants. Steve Miller sends that off.
Okay. No, that's all I have.
A lot of times the lighting provider will do a photometric, you know, plan.
Yeah.
And show the.
I'm just, I I the uh reason why I bring up the lighting is that I'm just, I'm never really tickled about using the um the uh the the really white lights, the ninety-three K nine-point-three K lights. It it seems to me that when you're trying to direct light downward, the softer, more incandescent it is in the five-thousand range. It's just so much better. Not that we have a lot of control over that, but uh you know, when we look at lighting ordinances, these big bright white lights are highly reflective and we should really consider because you can make them um any warmth you want, um especially if they're LED, and we should really consider not allowing those bright white lights pointing downward, but they should be more incandescent, but.
It's interesting that you bring that up cuz I just got, I just had a about a month ago, I had to drive on Greenwood where some businesses on Greenwood installed new lighting on their parking lot and people on Cambridge, it all of a sudden became much brighter and much more noticeable. We are getting complaints on that. That's an excellent observation.
Yeah.
I can look into other cities to see what kind of requirements they have, if they have specific, the specific type of light bulb.
Yeah.
It will be.
Oh, yeah.
I would just, you know, and when we look at the final review and you guys look at the lighting, let's let's take a look at that because, you know, I'm all for dark skies. Yeah, I know that's hard to do in an urban environment. But these um very blue, bright LED lights that Ameren's putting in and and other people are just, they're just too reflective. They're too bright.
One feature of this particular design is that they've placed the uh parking on the west side away from the residential area. So it it is shielded from the rest of the uh the street for the most part.
But when I get my telescope out, Barry, I'm just kidding.
Okay, are there any other uh questions with regards to uh
No.
Yeah, first reading here. Uh we have a motion. A second. All those in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Second reading, in ordinance of the City Council uh of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing a planned unit development district and approving a preliminary development plan for approximately sixteen thousand two hundred square feet of land at thirty-seven twenty-three Commonwealth Avenue.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion will move on to its third and final reading at the next meeting. Item number sixteen is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, amending ordinance forty-one twenty-one. The Maplewood Code of Ordinances as amended by amending chapter twenty-three Parks and Recreation, Article V, Article Five, Dog Park, Section twenty-three dash seventy-four, Licensed Suspension and Revocation.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion. A second. Any commentary?
I I just had an initial question. Um online, this ordinance is numbered chapter thirty-six, Article Four, Section thirty-six, one fifteen, so I didn't know if you if that's wrong online?
I'm not sure, but we'll, we'll definitely take a look at it to make sure.
Okay.
And we will have an opportunity at the next meeting to make those changes.
Yeah.
So, are there, go ahead.
Yeah, I just had, I, a couple just like not substantive, but, um, I think there were a couple of references to the number ten and some had N in parentheses, the numerals after it and some didn't, so maybe making them all consistent. And then, um, I think that was it. In the last paragraph.
We'll do that. For sure. Thanks.
Okay, uh, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Second reading, in ordinance of the city council, the city of Maplewood, Missouri amending ordinance forty-one twenty-one, the Maplewood Code of Ordinances as amended by amending chapter twenty-three, Parks and Recreation, Article Five, Dog Park, Section Twenty-three dash seventy-four, uh, Licensed Suspension and Revocation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion will move on to its third and final reading at the next meeting. Item number seventeen is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri amending chapter thirty-six, Parks and Recreation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Any, uh, discussion?
Yeah, so I would like to add that I know that the city wants us to give, uh, the first and second round of approval and then have us discuss the changes that we would like to incorporate from Maplegood. Um, and so I don't know if we actually want to either prepare that conversation, have that conversation now or be prepared to, like, make final decisions about that next week because I'll be honest, I am fine with wholesale approving Maplegood's edits.
I'm looking for it now if possible, so that way when you get the final ordinance next week, you can see all the, exactly what it is you're voting on.
Okay.
I was also fine with all the edits that were added, um, in the Maplegood version.
Me too.
For the benefit of those, uh, watching tonight, uh, would someone like to summarize those changes?
We clarified an organization. Um, they can be an individual as well, uh, when they apply, uh, for a permit uh, to operate one. They cleaned up that language in a couple of spots. We also changed it from four sides to three sides that will protect food from weather elements. And the cubic, uh, feet can be no more than forty instead of twenty-one. We also removed that we, uh, that it had to be elevated. We just made it so it's durable and in good condition because, um, there are boxes that they'll use for, um, various things that actually just be placed on the ground. I think really that was it. Um, the rest of it, I think they were fine with and, uh, somebody, if I'm missing something.
I think there was one thing, I don't know, um, where they added, uh, uh, hygiene items to the mini food pantry.
That's correct, yes.
And taking away the verbiage that says for the distribution to the homeless and other persons in need, just to put, uh, distribution to persons in need and we thought that.
Well, everyone is comfortable with the hygiene cuz at the la, at the last meeting, I know the direction Jackie was given was to keep hygiene out of it. Again, if you wanted in there, we'll keep it.
I think it was just that the box that was being referred to was not one, it was a hygiene box that's not located on City Street. So that was the, I, I think we're all fine with hygiene.
Okay. And then forty, forty cubic, I'm just being, forty cubic feet is, is big. I don't know if you, if you wanna think about it, if you wanna go forty, that's fine, but maybe Google, like, think of a, a commercial size refrigerator like you'd have in your garage, a big deep freezer. That's twenty cubic feet or nineteen cubic feet. You're talking about twice the size of that.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe between now and the next meeting, if you wanna keep it at forty, that's fine. I'm just pointing out that that's a, that's a pretty good sized, um.
I mean, four foot by five foot by two foot deep. That's forty cubic feet. That's, that's not ginormous, but, I mean, it is larger than a reach in freezer, but if you're gonna service, you know, uh, large swaths of our population that have a need for it, uh, I, and, and it says up to forty cubic feet, you know.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't have to be that big.
Necessarily have to be. Um, I think, but didn't you measure, they were like almost twenty-five or thirty cubic feet?
I think.
Biggest one was twenty, the biggest one they have out there right now is twenty-one cubic feet, and that's where that, where that number came from.
Gotcha.
I thought they had two that were larger, but.
Um, I will say too, you know, we had discussed last time the, the, but since then I was someone at Maplegood and, you know, these have been around through pretty much every season and they have not had any problem with like vermin or rodents or anything so that, you know, I was okay switching it back to the three cuz that does not seem to be an issue. And it seems like if it becomes an issue, it could be covered, you know, with the ability, you know, that you're supposed to keep it maintained and orderly or whatever, so, um, I found that okay. And then I think there's one, um, Attorney Graves in section twenty-six, one thirty-two I, I think, um, we're missing an, or individual, organization since we added in individual.
In the last sentence?
In the first sentence.
Oh, um.
Oh, sure, okay.
Okay, my, my question is that, uh, you know, based on, on the summary, Sean, uh, if, if the box is not elevated and it's not closed on four sides, then, you know, would that be, you know, do staff think that that would be a problem? If it's enclosed, then, you know, uh, you know, and it's open from the top, uh, you know, I, I can see where that wouldn't be a problem, but, based on the description, if it's open on the front and it's, it's not elevated, then, uh, yeah, am I, did it, did I get that right?
I think they all have, like, their pieces of furniture, so even though like the, the structure itself is not elevated off the ground, the first shelf is not flush with the ground, if that makes sense.
Okay, but you see what I'm, what I'm trying to get here, uh, we wanna make sure that we don't have infestations by, you know, by small animals.
And that's what I was saying right now. I think, you know, there are some that are three inches off the ground and they've had no infestations with animals, so, um, and we've been through pretty much every season, but.
Yeah, we could, I mean, you know, we could probably put something that says, you know, no food allowed at ground level in any container that's open in the front.
What is ground level?
Yeah.
I'll be honest with you, if you wanna, if, if you, if anyone's seen where mice can get to, if they can get anywhere. So if it's, if there's an opening, they can get in there and if they haven't been, I mean, if they're, if they're maintaining them each day, you can easily see that.
No, you're, you're, you're right, Jenny, that's, yeah.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Traxler, like, if that becomes an issue and it's not being taken care of, like, the city would have the authority to revoke.
Right. Yep.
I also think some of this negotiation could happen at the permitting level, um, where like we, there'd be an opportunity for like that plan to be reviewed and city staff to voice those concerns and coordinate with the organization or individual on, um, like those, like specific pantry related issues.
I agree.
Okay, any, any further discussion?
Yeah, actually, sorry, there was one thing I forgot to mention, um, the six month licensing period, um, is that standard? Was that something that we normally use or do we pick that for a particular reason?
That was chosen by the council, if I recall correctly. Well, let me just answer one of your questions, is, is it standard? There's not anything standard about this type of thing that we're doing or that you're doing here. The permits that are typically authored, provided under the ordinances are, you know, a day long, how do you use this pavilion or can you have a parade or whatnot? This is a little bit different than that. We do have, the, the city does have licenses, which is different. This is a permit and not a license. And if you're talking about, you know, um, a business license, that's typically one year. I believe that the concern that the council expressed with respect to the six months was that because it's a health and safety issue, you wanted to make sure that there was, um, a more frequent than one year review to ensure that they were following the rules. That being said, the ordinance does state that, um, I believe I'd have to find it here, but I believe that it says that we can, that the city could revoke if they were not, um, abiding by the rules. Yes. It's in, um, thirty-six dash one thirty-two K. The Director of Public Works shall have the authority to revoke a permit on a finding of a violation of any regulation or ordinance or upon good cause. So you can weigh those two things together.
Okay, thank you, um.
Councilmember Crossley, we would obviously work with people if there was problems, we would, we would obviously.
Yeah, no, I, I, I definitely trust that. I'm, I would be open to a year long permit if, if there was interest in that, um.
Yeah, I'm okay with six months as long as it's not an onerous pride, you know, process to renew that. They don't have to jump through hoops and it's, it's just a, uh, pretty much a, you know, a rubber stamp unless something's wrong. Uh, I would, I would prefer to see it that way.
I guess that's a question I have, uh, Mr. Traxler. So when you're applying for a permit, like, will they each time have to provide all the things or for an existing one? How, how would that be handled? Would it be less of a process for them?
We probably just have, if you have you made any changes since your last application, that would be the only thing we'd do differently. If the answer is no, it would be simply a rubber stamp.
Okay. I mean, I'm fine with a year, but, I mean.
I, I like the six month only because, uh, if, if the responsible party changes, uh, it gives a nice, easy avenue to, to make that change. And also it just keeps track of, you know, i- if there are any issues or, um, that kinda thing. And since it's not really, the people who are running these, um, will have the means to be able to get the permit. It doesn't cost them anything. I, I think it's, uh, I think six months is reasonable and, you know, I mean, down, down the road, if they say, hey, or we say, hey, we haven't had any problems and it's always usually the same organizations, maybe we'll just make it a year. I mean, it's not a problem to amend the ordinance either, so.
Um, Councilmember Crossley, I, I also wanted to point out, um, that the ordinance states, um, in thirty-six dash one thirty-two F, the last sentence is that inspection of the mini food pantry by the Director of Public Works to ensure it meets requirements of this article is required prior to the renewal permit, which, which, which may be issued to any permit.
Okay. I'm, and my last thing is, um, in the email that's attached to this communication or to this ordinance about the person with the permit having to enforce activities around the food pantry, you know, like ensuring that folks are placing food on the appropriate, um, you know, places and within the, like, the correct, um, receptacle, um, is that?
That's covered by the, it's under section thirty, okay, dash one thirty-three, um, six, which says that permittees are required to monitor and maintain the mini food pantries by regularly checking the physical condition and contents of the structure to ensure that it complies with the requirements of this article and by picking up all trash in and around the food, mini food pantries. As it is used in the section regularly means at least once a week. So for example, if they go, if the permittee goes out there and finds that someone has set up a microwave, it shouldn't be there more than one week or there's.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, okay, cool. I think that, I think one, once a week is pretty manageable. Um, I, in my head regularly, I was thinking like a couple of times a day and I was concerned about, you know, the risk to the person or organization who set this up, but once a week seems reasonable.
You can. Apologies, Councilmember Schmitz.
Oh, no, you go ahead. You finished?
No, I was just gonna say you can pick a different timeframe than one week. You could make it shorter or longer, but for the health and safety, that seemed, seems appropriate.
Agreed. And I also know that the folks running these pantries are checking them multiple times a day right now, just to keep supply up. And I think it's reasonable to expect that some level of that will be continued. But if the volume changes, I think it's unfair to us to then expect them to continue checking it at their current volume. So I, once a week is perfectly acceptable to me.
And I was just gonna say, I think the liability language was updated to in one thirty-two, which sort of makes a donor responsible for donating, you know, say negligently or whatever. And then, so I thought that was nice to, to sort of, because you can't necessarily control what someone's donating, but you can check and remove it, so.
Okay, is there any?
And I just wanna make sure I'm, I'm hearing correctly and, and, and Jackie has the proper direction. Really, aside from Councilmember Schmidt's, uh, amendment on I, the basically add the word or individuals aft, on the first sentence after organizations, we're, we're, we're good with, um, basically doing that to Maplegood's, uh, suggested amendments and bringing that forth next week or next meeting.
Correct.
Great.
Um, so that you all know, I believe that a couple of places in the ordinance, it's refer, it's referring to a mini food pantry. The mini food pantry is now defined to include the hygiene items. Is that okay, such that you're okay with that being one, a, a mini food pantry and not a mini food pantry, a mini hygiene pantry?
Right.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, uh, we need a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Uh, second reading, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri amending chapter thirty-six, Parks and Recreation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Move on to its third and final reading at the next meeting. Item number eighteen is old business. Does anyone wanna start that discussion?
Yeah, just a quick note on the formatting of this. So we have old business listed on the agenda and then different old business items listed in the city manager's memo. Would it be possible for those items on the city manager's memo to be reflected on the agenda? Because I know we've, like, had discussions about when is it appropriate to talk about which item? And Anthony's doing a really good job of tracking that within the memo and I think it would be helpful for it to be on the agenda.
I'd be honest with you. I mean, I know Jackie's here, we may have a difference of opinion. I don't, if you bring up an old business item that you've discussed, it's, it's similar if you're bringing up council communication. We bring up things all the time. It's a public meeting, it's reflected in the minutes. If you happen to bring something up, um, we can add it, however you want it, but I, I don't really see that, like, let's say tonight, we wanted to talk about the dog park or, well, the dog park, or this is a bad example, just some other ordinance we're working. I don't think it's totally inappropriate as long as you're not taking action on it to discuss it.
For sure. Yeah, well, I think part of it too is that the section on, of old business on the agenda is meant to also help us track those items more clearly. And I think it's helpful if they're reflected the same way, um, on either document. Cuz I really like what you're doing in your memo. I think that's really helpful.
So you'd rather have, like, citizens, even though we're not taking action on citizen survey and marijuana ordinance, you want those on the agenda as well?
Well, just under the heading of old business, cuz I don't think we're taking any action on the equity issue either, right?
We put equity issue on there.
Subjects.
Yeah, the council said, could they put that on every agenda? A while ago. So I don't, I'll do it, however you want is totally fine with me, but the only reason we keep equity discussion on there every month is because that was the last direction we were given.
For sure.
And I, I think it did come up at a meeting you weren't at, but the preference I think was that we, like, I had something, that was something we had previously discussed, but it wasn't under, this preference was I bring it up under council communication um, at the recommendation of, of, um, Attorney Graves. So I think then we also had confusion in that meeting too about which we were following, so I it would be helpful.
Attorney Graves, your concern? Attorney Graves, you're concerned, you, you're more concerned if they bring it up under council discussion, you'd rather have it brought up there as opposed to old business? I'm trying to figure out if it's not listed, what's the difference?
The, the preference, I, I mean, my preference would be that you put it under old business and that you list it so that it's clear. I understand that it's within your memo and your memo is attached to the city council packet, but if the intent is that, that it's going to be brought up, it should really be listed just so that it's, it's more clear notice.
Just my intent on this memo is not to, these items, they're just simple reminders more than anything. It's not really intended to bring it up. So I just want to make sure I'm meeting your, the council's desires as well as whatever you'd like to see done legally. For example, citizen survey, all I said was staff has begun negotiations on a formal agreement to complete the citizen business survey. To me, that's just an internal memo. We had that when we talked about our open records that if you put it in a memo, it doesn't necessarily need, need to be advertised via the agenda. So I've had different direction on this.
Well, I think we could probably just put citizen survey and nothing more. You could, you could keep it in your memo and then just reference citizen survey in the old business. If we need to talk about it, then we, we could. Does that make sense? Like, you don't have to put all your detail or no.
I, I think the point that Anthony is getting at is that some of these are just updates. They're not intended to be on the agenda to discuss. If it's under old business, it should be on the agenda to discuss, not as simply a what the city manager has been doing to keep this going.
You know, I get it. I just thought when we'd all discussed, there were like certain things that we would keep on it. So I guess we need to be good about notifying you when there is something that we want to be under. I mean, that, we'll have to let you know before we get the memo. And then if you have a question about the memo, we would just bring that up during council communication. So, okay.
Mr. Traxler, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I just, I guess I still, I don't understand why, I mean, in every other commission we have, we always have an old business section, which essentially allows a, like, for example, plan commission. We'll have an old business section where somebody can say, hey, whatever happened with, you know, the council amendments and it's not necessarily listed as an agenda item, but I don't know that. I mean, if you're saying that's inappropriate to bring that up, you don't understand what the difference is between council communication, bringing up an item or bringing it up under old business. I don't see where the, the difference is there. I don't list items on council communication.
We, we can talk about it later, but I think it's a question of intent of whether there's an intent of having the council discuss something or whether it's an intent of you simply updating the council on what you're working on.
Yeah, this memo.
I, I understand that you, it's a distinction, but it may be a distinction without a difference, but.
Okay, well, we'll resolve the, the old business issue and, and do it appropriately in, in a manner that we're on agreement on. Item number nineteen is council communication. Are there any things that?
Yes, because I thought this was an old business item. So, um, we did receive a memo concerning the marijuana decriminalizing and our options. And so I would like to request that we pursue the decriminalizing pathway and model our legislation after Webster Groves in the city of St. Louis. I would like to recommend a fine amount of one dollar. Other than that, no changes to the language that Webster Groves uses. And that is my request for this topic.
Just for clarification, when you say decriminalizing, I thought Webster Groves, if I remember correctly, it's still illegal.
It is, and they.
So that would still be us. So is that what you mean by decriminalizing? It's still illegal?
Yes. Yeah, and they have the language that says, like, I'm not, I'm not gonna quote it correctly, but essentially, we're not going to enforce it. And they do have a fine amount of fifty dollars, but I do have concerns about how that could be really detrimental to individuals. Were they given a citation for this in the future, even if that's not our original intent with ordinance? So I'd like to recommend one dollar.
And you, Attorney Graves, you would still have to pay court costs, right? No matter what your fine is, there's fine and court costs, is that correct? What, what are the, and I know most of the court costs don't stay with us, but what are those amounts now?
Thirty-two fifty.
Okay. I agree with Sarah's path forward. I think that makes sense based on the information we received. And it was, okay.
Does anyone have a problem with moving forward with that then?
No, that, to, to me, it's not. I mean, I do like Columbia, Missouri's wording. You know, it's a little more, I guess I kind of spell it out a little bit better, but I'm certainly fine with the with the Webster Groves wording of it. And the one dollar fine, yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, so does that represent clear direction to you, Anthony?
Yeah, Jackie, you're, you're good. Yeah, we'll, we'll have that on for the, I believe it's March, really, it's ninth, the next council meeting, we'll have that ordinance ready to go.
I would also like to thank Attorney Graves for her work on that. I thought that memo was really informative and helpful, so I wanted to say thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Yes.
I had an update on the Green Schoolyards workshop that I attended last week with the school. Just as a little background, the Green Schoolyards were like program is part of Cities Connecting Children to Nature initiative, which is a collaboration between the National League of Cities and the Children in Nature Network. And so it was attended by people from all over the country and the US Virgin Islands, which was really cool. And it basically just gave some information about like what Green Schoolyards look like and the purpose, which is to really provide equitable access to all people in the community to nature and that kids are spending so much more time indoors, especially with the pandemic. And so like, how do we create spaces that are open to the community that can get kids outside? I think it was just sort of a beginning information gathering exercise for the school district, but it, it seems like a great thing. It required, it usually is like a public-private partnership and that a lot of, actually a lot of cities do it to help reduce like stormwater. So a lot of times that agency pays for a lot of it, but anyway, I just, I forwarded you guys an email tonight that contained the slides from the presentation, if you want to look at it and you know, I think if the school district decided to proceed, like, I think it would be great if we could help them accomplish that, so.
Well, thanks for representing the city so that this, you can enable this to happen, so.
I'm sorry, it, oh, yeah, and it did raise, I will say, for me, some interesting questions about equitable access, like, to our parks and I, you know, my thought was, do we have equitable access in terms of like location? And, and I did look at the zoning map and they do appear to be pretty fairly spread out through the community, but I do think, you know, going forward with the Parks Board and with us, like, really keeping in mind with our park system is making sure, you know, single-family residential, multi-family residential, like, everybody sort of has great access to our parks. And so I just, I just wanted to say that.
Yeah, thank, thank you.
Other city council communication? Okay.
It was a success, I'm assuming. Did anybody go? I know my kids, I was, had to work, my kids went and they came home with all kinds of goodies. Sweet tooth tour was on Saturday.
Yeah.
It was, it was very successful. The businesses were extremely happy and we had, we had absolutely no problems. And honestly, even though it was probably only mid thirties, it felt like sixty-five degrees considering the weather we've had.
Yeah, it was pretty balmy.
We got, we're very fortunate, very good, very good program or very good, very successful.
You could follow that up with dental services Monday too. Next thing. Any other council communication? Mayor's report, the District Five mayors are continuing to have monthly calls. The next one is going to be Public Works in Transportation. There should have representatives from MoDOT and from county highways. So if you do have any issues, if anyone out there has any issues with regards to transportation and especially those those streets that are maintained by the county and the state, let me know and I can raise those questions with representatives from those organizations at the next meeting. Also, besides the District Five mayors, we do have a, a mid, a central association of mayors that, that gets together, you know, by ourselves to talk about issues that we share in common. And that's been very helpful. And that's, that's my report. City attorneys report?
I have nothing, Mayor.
City managers report?
Nothing, Mayor Greenberg.
And item number twenty-three is the second of two public forums. And this time, I'll say, if you want to raise your hand, please limit your comments to three minutes. And because we're nearing the end here, so is there anyone that would like to address council?
I am, I'm not seeing any hands that are raised.
Okay, and then there's no need to hold a closed session.
Yeah, there's no need.
Then I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
We're moved.
We have a motion to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting is now adjourned. Everyone stay safe and we'll see. Thank you.